We did have a handful of people that asked for, um, this, our agenda doesn't include public comment, but we have a handful of people here that wanted to offer some input in regards to, I presume, our council meetings, because this is going to be, it's rules of council. So, uh, one of them is coming forward and offering some bullet points for us to consider as we start our meeting. Uh, Cole, would you like to share?
Thank you. Uh, very briefly, I appreciate giving the, being given the opportunity to speak. My name is Cole Shenley. I live at 615 Ohio Street. So, we would like, our suggestions, which are strictly around the rules of council, uh, would be remove naming, uh, your address in public, bringing back Zoom comments or internet, you know, internet comments for people who can't, have to attend virtually. The prayer in meeting addressed, so that it's more inclusive for all faiths or people of no faith. Uh, being able to address council as individuals, being able for council to address us and have the time paused while the council's talking to us. For having every member of council to provide some kind of actual report for their committee. For the changing of meeting times, so they have two evening meetings rather than one morning meeting and one afternoon meeting, and have the time set to earlier in the day, like say six or six thirty. Mandate department heads attend city council meetings, having the pronouns updated throughout the ordinances, uh, because everything is like he or she rather than having they/them. So we'd like to have they/them included in those, in the language. And for there to be the possibility to have a petition, have a study session by citizens, if, uh, some threshold is met, um, uh, so that we can have, um, if we want, the city wants to have people come to talk, we'd like that. That's all. Thank you.
So, uh, whoa, since this is a little bit off the, uh, this is a little outside the, the petition for study session thing, just out of some curiosity on that. What, um, what would that, what do you, what would that, you know, what is the challenge?
So like, say like you got a percentage of the citizens in the city could be two hundred, three hundred, five hundred. I mean, you know, we don't have a fun number. But the idea being that, you know, if, you know, the way that you guys have done stuff, same with like, the Green Garden Bike Race game, enough people came, uh, raised some hell. You guys had a panel, so group meetings around that, same with like the bridge or up on my house with the, uh, you know, that kind of thing. So, you know, because those are focused around, to be frank, like wealthier people's problems. If, you know, poor people in the city can have the opportunity to have some opportunities to get a meeting on the books in a similar fashion, we appreciate that. Okay. Thanks for your input. Thank you. Appreciate you letting us be here.
Alright, so this is a, uh, this is a study session regarding Article 112, Rules of Council. Uh, they're mainly brought together out of concern of not having a time in caucus or enough time between caucus and a meeting for us to, uh, to fully address what the, uh, what the issues would be. But there's also, as, um, as Cole offered, there's a handful of other areas in this that we need to address.
Oh, hey, thanks. Alright. Um, so really, it's just an open floor on discussing that. We can't take any straw poles on it. I mean, I think the wisest thing to do would be to start at 12.01 and to work our way through, uh, with any areas of concern that we think we can do better at. Uh, the first one in that is the regular meeting times. Now, we just heard from a citizen that they want it all evenings. I remember historically there was, it used to be weekly and in the mornings, and I was actually just talking to an old council member about this, uh, last Friday. But it used to be weekly in the mornings, and there was a whole bunch of teachers that had issue with that back then. There was like three teachers on the council. So that's when they switched to one evening, one morning. And, uh, and they have since also gone to, we've since also gone to first and third Wednesdays. I have heard a lot of concerns about the evening ones starting too late. Is that something that, that a lot, that anyone feels any particular way about?
It seems like it's okay with me. I don't see a problem with it.
That it, you don't see a problem changing it to earlier, or that it?
I don't see no problem with it as it is.
Okay.
I think it does, it, it's difficult, especially when we have a long meeting or a very full meeting. Um, seven thirty is quite late. Um, and I will say for the morning meeting, yes, it is understandable that, you know, some of us work other jobs, some of us do not. Um, but that morning meeting, one, it always has lower attendance. Um, and two, it's extremely difficult for those of us who do work nine to five to make those adjustments to both be on council and be able to show up in present at that morning meeting. Um, I would love to see an early, at least an earlier meeting at seven thirty, but I'm also curious about the possibility of two evening meetings. Just for, simply for participation, uh, for accommodating the fact that council is extremely part-time, um.
I do, I do appreciate having a morning meeting, especially with our staff.
Yeah.
Uh, making it here. A lot of times we get presentations and stuff with the professionals that you're referring to, uh, during the morning meetings, and it gives us at least options. I know for the longest time, I mean, I was waiting tables and bartending. I would have never made it to a second shift. One, but the fact that we have two different options, at least it broadens it out, even if we have less participation in the morning.
And if I recall correctly, when we were going over the budget, um, the, the cost of the evening, the meetings for overtime starts incurring a lot higher the more that we require the morning staff to come in at night. So that was a factor on why we make sure that we have everything in the agenda done that Wednesday morning prior to when we have to have the agenda done to have time with the clerk's office and the solicitors.
I mean, I don't know about making it even earlier, because like, what if I'm a person who likes to come and see council meetings and I work till five thirty, six o'clock, and you start starting at six? I gotta, I can't come because I go home, get my kid, take the kids home, do this, that. You give people some time in between. When you start them at seven, you give people who have worked to five.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. You give people time to do what they gotta do and still come to the meeting. You start starting at five, I think you're gonna cut into those people who do like to come, because now they can't. They don't have time to do anything in between.
I wouldn't mind sneaking it up a little bit though, because we've had some eleven o'clock nights.
I can say, I wouldn't oppose, um, starting at seven, uh, at seven as opposed to seven thirty.
Yeah, yeah, five would be too early, I think, for.
Because we have to have our financial meeting.
Yeah, we do finance meetings on Wednesdays beforehand and caucus, so making sure we have enough time for both. Um, although, if we discuss caucus further, then maybe we can bump it back to six thirty even.
Because there'd be no caucus.
Right. Yeah, especially if there's no caucus beforehand that day.
That's something to be discussed. I think I'm literally the next point.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion or ideas anyone wants to offer to the schedule of meetings?
Not necessarily the schedule of meetings. I know you brought up prior that we weren't following the holiday schedule. Was that something that we wanted to start implementing?
Yeah.
For Thanksgiving and, and Christmas? I mean, that's budget time, so technically we're gonna be in many meetings anyways, um, at that time, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thanks for catching that. So, one of the things on, by ordinance is that we have the Wednesday, so the third Wednesday of the month before Thanksgiving and before Christmas is supposed to be a day meeting. And we never actually do that. It's been evening meetings for a while now.
At least for our two years that we've been here.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that's something that would have to get struck from the ordinance, just, uh, since, since, so we either have to start doing it by the ordinance, or we have to change the ordinance.
I think it's actually a great action item to, uh, to start following. Uh, then people can be released until, especially would it be like the day before Thanksgiving or?
Especially to go out of town.
It's a whole week before Thanksgiving.
It's the week before Thanksgiving, but, uh, and, well, Christmas, it'll be probably the week before then also, but, uh, I don't disagree. I think, you know, people's evenings are expressly tied up during those times. And if they can squeak out two morning meetings and then free up their evening time, uh,
Go out of town with family.
That, uh, I, I think it might be.
My biggest fear with changing it to match the ordinance is, as we heard some of the constituents talking about, that's a budget season, and that would not be giving us an evening meeting during budget season for citizens to be heard.
That's my concern, because then we're saying the whole month of November and the whole month of December, we will have no evening meetings.
Right.
Which will be here on Tuesday and Thursday, probably anyway.
But we're giving no opportunity.
I think it's a great idea. I just, uh, he suggested switching it in the month of November, December, but then it also starts complicating things if we do it like that.
Right, and it's not, it's not the week of Thanksgiving.
No.
It is the week before, like it is, is it necessary, and we haven't been doing it.
Okay. So you like how it's operating now generally? And we can't take votes on this, that's the, uh,
Yeah, exactly. If we're not, if it's not being enforced, then why keep it?
Keep it somewhere.
Yeah. And then the public can rely on the fact that the meetings are at the same time every month.
Yeah.
Are those of us who are not seasoned on council permitted to offer any insight?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're a guest here.
Uh, so there are just, I guess, two thoughts that are immediately popping into head that I, I, going back to one of the things that Cole had shared earlier, just being cognizant of this is, this is really leaning into one religion that we're taking into consideration, right?
Oh, yeah.
Um, and then the other element of this being, um, if you're looking at the, the meeting times, the, the city school board is consistently meeting at the exact same time that council's meeting, um, with one of their public spaces. So you're gonna be dividing up the public on where they can pay attention.
Oh, yeah, you're on school board. They do the first and third, just like us?
No, they do the, is it second and third? It's, one of the meetings always overlaps. I will Google it while we're sitting here right now, so I can compare it, but you're always, you're always, and they're always evening meetings.
It's six o'clock on that same Wednesday, usually.
So you're always splitting where people can go.
Should probably coordinate that.
Yeah, if you could Google that real quick.
Just for the record, I'm not currently on school board, so it's not me forgetting one of my duties.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's been a couple of years.
It's been like two years.
Yes.
Yeah, Brzezinski will probably be texting me and letting me know when it is. Alright, so we can come back to that for a second, or in a bit, um, because it may even just make sense then to flip so that we have a, uh, evening at the beginning of the month and morning, second half of the month, if it's a matter of avoiding school board.
Like permanent for the entire year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It appears it's the first and the second.
It's the first.
The first Wednesday, the second Wednesday. It's the first and the second Wednesday of the month.
Oh, so it's not affecting anything right now?
So if you're second meeting, oh, no, yeah, you're.
Yeah, because first is morning, third is evening.
So I guess it's.
So it shouldn't be?
Yes, so, but I would just, I guess as you're scheduling it, just, just know that some, there are some times they're gonna overlap. So the committee, the whole, and everything.
Alright, we keep ours consistent. That's, uh, that's on them adding separate meetings. That's on them. Alright, the thing that brought us all together, caucus meetings. Uh, thirty minutes before council meetings. There's been some suggestion that we need a little more time for that.
So my, the reason why I brought that up, because, um, I spoke to people who were on city council meeting, city council outside of here, and I asked them questions, like, hey, you know, and they were like, well, every Monday, we have, let's say they have a meeting on Wednesday, every Monday, they have an agenda meeting, and they go over every item on the agenda. That way, everybody in the room is clear exactly what's, everything is, what you're voting on, blah, 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 blah. You know, I think that's, we should do that, to just make sure everybody's very clear on everything. Because, so like, if you work for a shift and you're on city council, and city hall's open for a shift, you don't necessarily have time to make calls, to be calling people, discussing stuff. I can't do that as a principle. If I'm calling city hall for city council stuff, I can get myself in a jam.
Yeah.
So, we need to be, you know, have some time where we can all sit down, and whoever needs to be here to explain to us everything that's on the agenda. That's what, that's what other places are doing, you know? I mean, maybe it's the Monday before the meeting, you know?
Well, I mean, we currently have Tuesdays and Thursdays set aside to be able to have, um, study sessions. We could possibly do the Tuesday prior to the meetings, but that's a discussion for all of council to decide upon. Would that be taken away from our current caucus time and then possible future presentations? Would we be requiring people to come to that Tuesday meeting to do a presentation? Or we still have a little bit of time for presentations, I guess is the question.
I mean, you could probably use that time, since you're doing, you know, if you did the caucus like, I don't know, Tuesday, like you're saying, right, for an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes, then you wouldn't really need to do the ca, the caucus time could be used for something else, whatever you want to use it for. You know, but then everybody's clear. Nobody's coming in the day of a meeting. What's this? What's that? It's, everybody's clear.
Oh. I'll tell you, the, um, we're gonna get to it a little bit later, but, I mean, the, the moment that really sticks out, I, I think caucus, um, has had a variety in the, in the time we've been in here. Um, and I think that some of it's gonna change again next year with the dynamics of the group changing. To, to the point where I'm, I'm actually, I think a half an hour might be plenty next year. We've been, we've been pretty good with our time, uh, most of it this year. But the, the thing that really, that I really remember, uh, it was one of those wake-up moments, well, you've been at it before, so I guess it's just you, but school board, same thing, um, was that I remember Brzezinski asking a question about something like February or March, and then, uh, me looking around, wondering who was gonna answer, and then realizing it was something that I was sponsoring. It was one of the bills out of Public Works, and I was the liaison to Public Works. So I remember looking at it, being like, oh, my name's on the top of this paper. I'm supposed to be the one who can answer that, and I don't know the answer, uh, out of my committee responsibilities. And, uh, from that point on, I started having the, the, the department that I was the liaison to, um, giving me like itemized, uh, uh, like annotated explanations for every single thing that I was sponsoring. Um, and, and I, I got that every, you know, every Friday before the agenda came out. I usually had that from Public Works. Um, and it was, you know, sometimes it was a six-page document, sometimes it was a one-page document, depending on the items. But a lot of the, uh, a lot of the answers we're looking for in caucus meetings, I think, are stuff that on Friday, we should be able to look at the agenda, and if we were a little cleaner about who the liaisons were to departments, we would be like, oh, I'll go ask Susanna about this police issue, and, and then count on her to actually know that. I think, uh, I think one of my bigger first, one of my biggest frustrations in the last year and nine months um, is, is knowing whose job it is, like, I just wanna do my job. Um, I don't wanna be responsible for other people's information and knowledge. And, uh, and I, I have some, and that's the spot that sometimes I get caught, is, uh, and especially this year as president, when we go through the agenda, I go through agenda meetings, like what you're talking about. Uh, today's agenda meeting lasted twenty minutes. Um, they went through all the points real quick. We've got an easy agenda coming out this month, or this week, in my opinion. Um, and then other times, I hear the agenda and I say, hey, Chris, you really gotta explain what these transfers are coming from, write them itemized. But most of it, ninety-five percent of it, I think you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to know. Not need to know, but you.
Care to know?
Yeah, yeah. All of these, all of these adjectives are bad to describe how we feel about our job in public and private.
My, I, I hear you on that and the process. My concern, for example, is public safety liaison, is that I actually don't get CC'd on all of the police ordinances. So I see them once the agenda comes out. So how, you know, what is the commitment or accountability that we can put in place that each of us within our committee responsibilities actually see all of those things before they make it to the agenda meeting?
This is, this is one of those, and I think it plays out in how we vote, and this is, so we had a vote a few months ago about the Shot Spotter, and you were the liaison to that committee, and you said you didn't have enough information for it yet. So I voted with you on the tabling it. Not because, like, you never, you never turn down money is kind of the rule of thumb on council. And, uh, but, you know, I voted with you to make sure that, to, I voted in favor of tabling it, because I was like, if our liaison to that department doesn't know, then I really can't vote. You know, so there's, there's a challenge that I think we would need to just hold our ground and make sure that our committee people know what we're voting on, so that we would have a well-informed council. And I think at times we don't on that.
I, I mean, I, I feel like everybody should know everything, not like have to give one person a person a responsibility of you informing the council. If, I'm a football guy, so like, if I'm the office coordinator, I want my running backs coach to know what I'm thinking to, like, know what's going, know the whole game plan. Not just, I'm hiding the game plan, and if they need to know, they come to me. I want you to know the whole game plan, while I'm doing it, while you're teaching them that, while she's teaching them that, because it all comes together as one. But if I'm the only one that's like, you know, they're not gonna know unless they ask me. I mean, that's, I think everybody should be in the know, but I think that's another agenda.
So, uh, I agree with actually both of them. Uh, I think that, you know, best-case scenario, they would communicate with somebody on council when they wanna put something on the agenda. And then paired with an expanded caucus, then people would have time to look at those line items and decide whether they, A, need more information, B, need the department heads to come in and reach out to us, or, um, if any other action needs to be taken.
I just had an idea. The agenda meeting happens on Thursday.
Thursday morning.
So the agenda is finalized.
Everything has to be into the clerk's office by eleven thirty. By ordinance, it's in this thing, uh, eleven thirty on Friday.
On Friday.
And then I approve it Thursday afternoon or Friday morning. Uh, this week it's Friday morning.
Okay.
And, um, and then it gets sent out once I approve it.
It's Thursday at noon.
Thursday noon.
Yeah. So could it potentially be our Thursday time even before the Wednesday? Because then that gives you the time to call the department heads, to talk to different people, just an hour of caucus Thursday at five thirty, leading, so that we, that way we have six work, you know, six days, I mean, minus the weekend, but we have six days to say, here's our agenda. We have a depth of understanding of it, and we can still have time to do whatever we need to do.
There'd be a lot of pressure on our administrative staff in our office.
For the clerk, for the clerk's office.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a reason why I haven't approved the agenda yet. If this was an agenda meeting right now, um, that would be, that'd be a challenge.
If we moved it up a day, so everything had to be in by Wednesday at noon, so we could do that?
Yeah. The agenda includes a lot of bills and stuff that gets paid, so there's, there's a, half of the agenda meeting today was them talking about the logistics of where the pressure is throughout the office. Like, the bills to be paid all go through the finance department, so they need them on Tuesday. So if we just keep bumping everything back, then the stuff that we're voting on on Wednesday needs to be written out and submitted the Monday, ten days early.
Right.
And sometimes bills come up quicker than that.
Right.
So I think, I think the schedule as it is now is, is tight on that. Uh, caucus being on a Monday or Tuesday, I think, would be, could be, could be something worth discussing, though.
Yeah, I'm curious about a Tuesday, five thirty to six thirty.
But if, if it's a morning meeting, it'll still give us limited time.
Right.
Uh, so.
Or Monday.
Actually, don't take meetings on Mondays.
I also, I also, we do have it blocked off, and we can, with twenty-four hours notice, have a special meeting to go over when we have tough agendas.
Don't we assume they're all tough? So do we, you know, you know, who's tough, who defines tough?
I think we know which meetings are gonna be, uh, tough.
I mean, I don't know who defines, you know, it's like saying, you know, assuming that a kid knows something, like, let's make sure, make sure you know. Just my opinion, man.
Yeah, 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 no, no, no.
It's a good thing we all get the vote, huh?
I do think, Chuck, like, in one of the things that you had just shared, um, I'm gonna keep referencing back to the school board. When we knew that there was gonna be an exorbitant amount of, of, of either public comment or there was gonna be issue with what the agenda laid out, we would often schedule that meeting with a special meeting so that we wouldn't have to, I think it interrupts public comment and it interrupts citizen feedback when you're cutting people short or you're jamming too many things on, because then you're going into eleven thirty, twelve at night, um, and no one's paying attention at that point. So if you know that sometimes separating it out might be another, kind of going back to what you said.
Uh, this is just a bit of a curveball of things, but if the agenda is finalized by Friday morning at the very latest, um, would even like a Friday lunchtime meeting be a possibility?
Everything's possible with the rules.
I'm gonna be the annoying one over here in the corner, but just the way my brain operates. Can you walk me through a little, just the timelines, because my brain's not fully grasping when you're saying, like, this time and the, the, just, the way.
The timeline for how something gets to be for council to vote on it?
Yes.
So, it's almost all budget stuff, and that's what we have really control over. Uh, if it's legislation or ordinances, then it just has to be with a sponsor and a second, um, by Thursday at noon. If it's submitted to the clerk's office.
To go on for that following Wednesday.
Yep, yep. So that's legislation. Typically, that's a bad way to do it. Typically, it should be going through our subcommittees, and it should be reviewed, and, uh, the solicitor should be reviewing it. We have solicitor meetings every Wednesday. We don't have council meetings, so the president and vice president do that. Um, and it should be circulated among council. So that's how it should be legislated. For the budget, coming from the different departments, they have to have it written and brought to purchasing by Tuesday. She compiles it all and brings it to finance. Uh, they do the orders on that through the day Wednesday. It gets submitted for the agenda meeting on Thursday morning. Um, so all of the, the little PDFs we get of all the different memos, um, they basically put those in a slideshow, and all the department heads, the mayor, his chief staff, and council president go through all of those different memos, uh, one by one. In most cases, it's three thousand dollars for chlorine for this, uh, our treatment plant, and it's, you know, uh, and then every once in a while, there's, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for stormwater retention on our downtown streetscape. And when we get that one, it's like, hey, we're a little storm on, everyone's gonna ask questions about that. Public Works, we get more detailed memo on that, you know, and that's, and that's just. So when you talk about the different coaches making sure that everybody knows everything, our system right now is that the president gets to know everything, and then the rest of the information and responsibilities don't disseminate out very well, which is why I'm thrilled to have this meeting. I don't, I don't think that the, uh, I don't think the whole president is correct about burden on this council. That's why they all do. That's why they all get stressed by it.
Thank you.
So I just didn't check my email last hour. I did get the agenda sent to me at four o'clock.
Uh, one additional question about caucus meetings, um, it states that administrative personnel and individuals approved by city council can attend, but is it not also that members of the public can attend, but not make, like, they can fly on the wall essentially?
It's a public meeting.
Right. Should that be clarified at all in there, or that's an assumption?
Deputy Solicitor, do we need to state that the public's allowed to be there? It was referenced in an Erie Reader article last month.
Oh, right.
Because, I mean, it's in there with, you may wanna put something in there that says that, because on, you know, point oh one, that caucus meetings, regular meetings are held, you know, essentially back-to-back, and the public is, is a welcome. You probably clarify that.
But I, you know, like, I often ask different department people to come, like, when we were doing the plan. But I, you know, like, I often ask different department people to come, like when we were doing the planning contract to outsource that, you know, that was one where when we went through the agenda meeting, I said, it'd be good to have someone from planning, you know,
Absolutely.
Make sure Aaron Carey and Renee were ready to explain that process well. But I feel like on that one, if we had a planning department liaison, they should've made that request. All right, are we good on twelve point oh one for now? Place a meeting, do we wanna change it?
So, question.
Yeah.
So I know the county takes their show on the road like every summer. Just throwing it out there, we, we don't have to be here, uh, in theory.
No, this, this is a city council that is elected at large in the city. Why would we wanna change the location? Most people don't even know where our city hall is.
I was just throwing it out there, some, some people can't get downtown, you know?
I don't think you can do that anymore, do you?
We have done that in the past, yes. We've met at JFK, we met at Booker T, as a council meeting.
I like that. Was that just a, like a one-off?
Regular council meeting.
That would be neat to do like in the summertime.
All right. Sorry, Mike, I was laughing, but it's uh, it's being taken seriously and has some good benefit.
On community centers.
Yeah.
Mike, any questions? Is there any concern about security?
Should be.
I mean, I'm just here about
Yep.
The one meeting we had, it was really long, I think.
Mm-hmm.
I know that that person was known as
That is true.
That did happen.
Come here a little bit.
Yeah.
So, there's a brick in the lobby.
This was painted.
This was painted.
All right.
Throwing it out there.
So the idea of uh, maybe changing the, except in the case of emergencies, to something that would be a little more, um, you know, giving freedom in, you know, unless by like unanimous consent that, that we meet somewhere else in the summer. And I do think it'd be kinda fun to take it on the road this summer for our evening meeting and meet at the different community centers. I, I could, I could dig that idea.
That might get us some brownie points.
That's also the area that prohibits signs and placards. I'm cool keeping that the case.
Yes, please.
All right, sorry. Yeah. All right. And no endorsements, obviously. Executive sessions by sunshine law requirements, I imagine we can't mess with that. Special meetings, twenty-four hour notice, that's all sunshine law stuff for the most part anyways. Does anyone have any concerns about special meetings?
I mean, I don't think we've had one since we've all been on council this group.
The housing one was a special meeting.
Oh, the housing one?
Yeah.
Well, that was because it couldn't be a committee meeting, cause we ran out of time with the different timelines of getting things submitted.
The, the comment on the previous page on twelve point oh one, uh, I think that's addressed in twelve point oh five, that all meetings are open to the public. So, um.
Okay, so we're considering caucus and meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, is that clear?
No, that, well, it's a summary, I'm reading it very literal, so meetings are open to public, all regular and special meetings. But in twelve point oh one, it says A, this is regular meetings, and B is caucus meetings.
Okay. So maybe we need to add caucus.
I just add caucus meetings to point oh five.
Okay.
Okay.
Might need to put a little like asterisk that, you know, space available. But, cause we had a couple of issues where there were a lot of people here and if they tried to pal into our caucus room, it would, it would overwhelm the room.
I don't know, is that even something we could really state or does that start coming?
Is that legal?
I feel like you would just move out into the chambers.
If we got to that point, I would think.
We would move to the chambers, I feel like.
Fair enough.
Move it out, really?
That's what I think we'd do.
All right, uh, and as Tyler was asking, that's now we're on to twelve point oh six, submission of ordinances and resolutions.
You mentioned, oh, go ahead.
I wanna really point out, um, that last sentence. All resolutions submitted to council and prepared by any individuals, groups or organizations that have not been reviewed by council and its solicitor shall automatically be tabled for at least one meeting prior to evoking taking on such resolutions. Just pointing that out, as to some, when we don't have adequate information, we should be as strong on table, in my opinion.
And when we say reviewed by council, does that simply mean a copy of the resolution was distributed to every member or does it have to be more than that?
All those memo emails.
Oh, that's, that counts?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I think that also, um, that, um, so if it came from a group or a outside of council or outside of the government, that it should, uh, you know, go to caucus, we definitely have to have those people in caucus or know, you know, what it's about, what the genesis was, you know, what the intentions of it are, before we can, you know, consider it. So I, I, I agree with that. And so, I also agree that, you know, it should be like, you know, they should come to caucus, you know, the time in advance before when they want any action or submit all.
Here's my question in follow-up to that. Um, I see a potential of stacking a caucus meeting so that new groups or groups that perhaps the council doesn't agree with can never get on the agenda or opportunity to speak if you're requiring them to come to caucus prior to them submitting an ordinance review. I think that that puts a lot of faith, you know what I'm saying, in council to permit those people time to present that ordinance.
I mean, in any case, it needs to be a member of council in the second.
Right, before we even get to see it.
Right. I'm just saying, it just, that was just, if, if we were gonna require that group to come to caucus before they were allowed to even move it, move forward. I get what, I get what everyone is saying. I'm just saying if we added the addendum in there that they had to come to the caucus prior.
I think it's almost always from city hall staff for ninety-five percent, so very limited circumstances.
So, uh, just as a footnote, we did have, uh, outside people sponsor or want to sponsor, uh, action, you know, or ordinances, uh, to, uh, to in generals, funding the environmental, you know, uh, what do you call them, environmental advisory committee and stuff. And so, those things took about six months in order to actually get crafted, get approved. If you're going with an ordinance as opposed to the resolution, it has to be, you had to buy, you know, an attorney and go through the city systems and then, you know, make sure it doesn't conflict with any other laws. So there's, there's a lot to that if you were trying to sponsor an ordinance as opposed to, uh, a resolution.
That one, that one took years, uh, it was
Environmental caucus.
I'm just wanting people to know that it just doesn't, an outside agency just doesn't walk up and say, you know, the new law.
And the way, and the way that, and the way that frankly got done was that we talked to, um, Mr. Betza to draft something up. I went through and I edited it as I wanted to. And then I shared it with Jasmine, she and I first and seconded it, sent it to the clerk and Betza as a first and second said, put this on the agenda this week. And that's how it got on the agenda. The president never approved that one or, uh, we didn't have any further feedback. We just pushed that on in December. Because I've gotten sick waiting for it. So that's, I mean, so when we look at how long things have taken, now for that to be up and running, their first meeting is the same time as our first CRIS meeting. So certain things, uh, move along at the rate at which, you know, the, things move along at different rates.
Exactly. Whoever prioritizes them.
Me, me pushing that on as an, as a, onto an agenda in December and then us not putting together the actual committee until June or July was, uh, probably an example of me rushing it on the front end or other people holding it up on the back end. Manner of voting. I've gotten a little bit of pushback about this, uh, that when we don't say anything, it's presumed to be a yes. Do you guys want to force us to say yeses or nos?
No.
Great. I'll take the lack of any other response in the affirmative.
He looks like he's writing a hit from one.
Can I ask for clarification on that one? Just how it got to be where you don't have to say your vote?
So in nineteen sixty-six, um, yeah, I don't know, and I, I'd actually talked to a old timer about this too, and they said, you know, it used to be the other way around. We never said nos, but we always said yeses. And now I'm reading the ordinance and I'm like, that guy wasn't doing it right back in the nineties. Uh, so I, I don't know how that's been.
So I think it may have done with the panel also, that there's buttons.
That we don't use?
Yeah.
That you don't use.
How we use it?
Someone would still have to verbally
People probably messed it up.
Say yay or nay.
It works. But Still here.
You can't see your vote though, once you push the button, you got a little bit twisted.
You don't know if you pushed the wrong one, you don't make a mistake, you pushed the wrong one.
We probably have to have little stickers, put yes, no, so that people know.
We got stickers up there.
Once upon a time.
And if you wanna vote yes, but for some reason it said no, you still have time to change it. That has happened.
You know, we had a practicing at the beginning and the end of every year with every president. And that's on me, I just haven't done it for nine months now, but if you guys wanna play with that, I can, uh,
No. For example, I can say, uh, Mr. President, call for the tote board. That's all that need to be done, we would use the tote board.
So any council member can call for the tote board?
Yes.
So motion to call for the tote board.
But so do the votes last in that case, or the minute?
You vote last, nobody gonna know until you hit the switch.
But I don't know what the other votes are ahead of me, Mr. Witherspoon.
They'll be.
The other thought I have there is, um, if it's, if it's, I guess, being inclusive to those who, who take in information in, in different ways. If, if we, if we are, if we're not casting a vote up, like in, and we have people who can't see, who are blind, can they, do they? I guess it's just making sure we're being cognizant.
If it does read all of those options.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great, now someone's gonna call for the tote board, I gotta make sure I know how to use it this one step.
Cause we're doing that.
All right, uh, any other comments on that? Okay, uh, minutes of meetings, that's, uh, anyone have anything to say about that? Uh, agendas. All reports, communications, ordinances, resolution, contracts. Thursday noon.
Um, I wanted to ask, is it possible for us to be able to get our agenda posted to the city website like the county does their county council meetings?
Where it has, like you can link to all the ordinances, all the resolutions, like to have full transparency of what is on the agenda? Cause the county's already doing that.
Yeah, and we have a new website coming in the next few months.
Okay.
So, um, I would expect that to be
Yeah.
part we can continue to ask for.
Right, because we are stating all reports, communication, ordinances, resolutions, and it is not currently that way that you can access all of them.
Can you do another word this one step?
Yes.
Uh, is everyone comfortable with the president arranging the agenda? That's coming in. Any ordinance or resolution which is not apparent agenda may also be considered by, uh, an affirmative waiving of rules with five votes. That's a good, that's a resolved order.
Yeah, we heard that that's no longer, uh, an ability of the council because of the sunshine.
If it has to do with money, we're allowed to do it. We did it for a resolution last June, uh, June of twenty-two. That's the only time I think it's been done in last, in my time on the council.
Should that specify any, like, just add like non-financial ordinance or resolution?
Do we wanna put something in conjunction, you know, in, do we need to make reference to the sunshine law in that?
I don't think necessarily that, but I think if you guys, your, your, your whole purpose here is to kind of streamline and optimize what you're doing. So if you wanna, so I think Susanna's suggestion of like saying that that applies to just non-financial type of situations probably would help any future members.
Is saying financial too broad of a term?
Monetary?
Monetary.
Once you talk about financial and monetary about it, so
Yeah.
If the money's gonna leave the city's hands, you're gonna hand it to the city's hands.
So the only thing that, so the time that we waived the rules was in regards to the, uh, the police surge with ARP funds. So that was the hiring of cops, but, but bringing it back to one seventy-five in the future.
And then it was already budgeted.
It was already budgeted for that year and it would've been future years that it would've been resolved in. So is that still budgetary, is it still financial, is it, do I have to worry about my terms there? Cause I was told ahead of time that I was gonna be good with the sunshine law, cause it wasn't appropriating money on that spot. It was just a resolution.
What are the sunshine laws?
Okay. All right, I'm just gonna put a little, a little note on that.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions about the agenda? All right, on to the order of business. Um, as we did have some concerns from the public, uh, it doesn't specify prayer in there, it's a silent meditation. So that's not necessarily in the, uh, the rules. Uh, I think that's just an advising, uh, as to how that gets practiced in our meetings.
Is that something, and I haven't read the full, you know, when this was last passed in oh nine, if there was any additional details here, but around the silent meditation, is there anything, is there any further definition of what that means? Or that is on the precedent of how to conduct the silent meditation?
Even the, uh, even the prayer aspect of it, that was, um, that wasn't done until Curtis Jones was in, um, that was, that was when it was introduced back as prayer.
Okay.
It's not something that, it, it has a, what, eighteen-year tradition at this point. But it's not something by, by law. Can you guys write history in me on that?
No, it's, you're, you're right. But my concern is it seems to be a little confusing to ask a moment of silence and then give a prayer. To me, a moment of silence, I'm gonna pray in my moment of silence. So it just seemed like it's the same thing. But, uh, by fact, over my twenty, twenty years, uh, there's always been a, a prayer. Even Mario said one.
Under, um, letter D, um, I know I said this before, um, when the citizens are to be heard.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't necessarily like that they have to give their address. I think in this day and age, that's a touchy situation to have to give your address to somebody publicly. I mean, you never know who's watching, who they're having problems with, you know?
Yeah.
They might've moved for a certain situation, now I'm here to talk and I'm giving this out. And then we don't know if they're giving real addresses anyways.
Yeah.
We don't have no way of proving it.
Name?
Yeah.
First and last name.
Like, like for me, I think the clerk's office should have a record in case we ever need to go back and have a record of who was speaking, maybe they said something and they left really early. I like having a name in some type of form, cause she, Lori keeps a record of the names and the address, so I like to have that type of verification in case we need to circle back to somebody.
How, how do we know we're giving, they're giving, if I said, my name's Mo Troop, I live at, uh, Cherokee Boulevard. How, how do we know we're giving, they're giving, if I said, my name's Mo Troop, I live at, uh, Cherokee Boulevard, whatever, you know what I mean? Like, how do I, how do you know that that's my real address?
You don't. Yeah, it's an auto code.
Most people are just giving, you know?
A good amount of people do fill in the sign-in sheet. Um, one thing I've seen, yeah, I love the sign-in sheet. Um, one thing I would personally love to see for when you do come up and give your full name is stating your municipality. Like, just saying, I live in the city of Erie, I live in Mill Creek. Like, I, like, that is something I've seen in a lot of other councils, um, just to simply state municipality, because we have plenty of people who don't live in the city, but they work here, they own property here, whatnot, and we are opening it to anyone, um, but I think it would just give us some perspective if we hear, like, not name and address, but name and municipality.
Do we wanna require name?
Yes.
I think we have to.
Yeah, I think, I don't.
Except under special circumstances, I think.
I think we have to. Does that sound like something that is a legal requirement of us?
No, how do you even know they're giving you the right name?
Right.
I think they should get some, some name, because you're there, who are, they are addressing you and wanna possibly follow up on it. And I think, I've just thought, thinking here, maybe there's a, people can make some comments, maybe there's, uh, they get sent, like, an email to the clerks, like, afterwards, because, like, it is a good idea, if someone has, like, some insightful comments, you know, I really wish I could have talked to that person at that time, maybe you have a...
Yeah, we have a sign-in sheet.
So why don't we let them know that, hey, we want you, if you wanna do further comments, so that one of us can contact you afterwards. Here's an email address that goes to those, to be clear.
Right, so why don't we just cut it all to one place and add a, uh, contact right on, right on the sign-in sheet? And then...
If they'd like further contact.
If they, if they, like...
But do we need their name if they don't offer, if they don't want further contact?
I think...
You know, we have some, we have some cases where they ask about it as a matter of, they're concerned about reach back.
Machine, and they wanna comment, they, they drop a name. You can't force them to be, for it to be the correct name, but, uh...
Yeah, so they also double track, but I think they have to always give a name or something.
Yeah.
I mean, even if they say, I'm just gonna give you my first name, my first name is John.
So, so when you say we have to, is it because of the law that we write, write here now? You know, that's the...
That's, well, this, something we're gonna fix, yeah, how we're gonna, I should say.
Okay.
Also, this is the, I think this is one of the first times this is coming up in here, but in, same in citizens to be heard, can we please take the suggestion of updating the pronouns, so it's more inclusive throughout the entire document?
Yes.
When you talk at a, a county council meeting, you stay, say your name and, uh, Mill Creek or Summit Township or what have you.
I wanna go back up to point B, where it says pledge of allegiance and silent meditation. It, it spells out silent meditation versus prayer, so I don't, I, thinking about who we are as a city and where we're, what direction we're moving into, the current prayer, I don't think is very representative of, of us as a city, the way it currently stands. But I do think that many of us within that silent meditation could show up a, a, as our, within, within our beliefs and our systems. I just, the way it's currently written, it says silent meditation, so I think you're, you're kind of treading, like, you have to, like, make a decision, I think. That's just how it reads.
Right, and unless, uh, like, for example, the California State House before every meeting is, um, a prayer essentially, but each one is led by a different, uh, leader of different faith groups. So I was there at different times, and it was a Jewish rabbi, a Baha'i leader, a Pentecostal, it was, all different. Um, if we don't have the capacity to organize something like that where we're able to be inclusive, I think it being silent and us practicing whatever silent meditation means to us is the best way to be a welcoming place for everybody.
What if we, um, you know, if we had, like, you know, when you come out here, you do the silent meditation, but in the back, before we come out, those who wish to pray, and the way we've been praying, can do it together before they come out here. But then out here, it's just silent meditation, and as Mel said, you're praying yourself, you know what I mean?
So, um, like I said, it's been a twenty-year, um, now more than twenty years, even though it's not in the, in the ordinance, but I don't see it, um. Um, so, um, I'll, I'll just say this, uh, the, if you have a Bali guy and then you have a Jewish guy, that doesn't change the inclusiveness of a prayer for any particular person on any given instance. Because if a rabbi came in today and prayed, what would or would that not mean to me? You, you know what I mean? So it's not, it's an illusion of inclusion, really. And so, um, I just wanted that to, to be a footnote of the conversation, it's an illusion of inclusion. It's not actually inclusion, a prayer theoretically goes to the higher power, whichever it is contrived to. And then, so I haven't witnessed the ones at the house, well, some of them I have, and some of them stay right in the caveat of whatever their particular sect is, which would actually make it less inclusive as opposed to more in- inclusive. And so if you know, so as a person who's been giving the prayer for the past four years, it's always into the name of, of the higher power. If you, uh, you can, you can go back and run the tape, you know what I mean? And, and, and so it is the most inclusive prayer that you can have, because it allows you to determine where that prayer goes for you, so.
And I will say I'm not necessarily advocating that we have a different leader each time, but even just the fact that you lead the prayer with dear heavenly father, that's not how I pray. And so if we can keep it as a silent meditation, and if there are folks who do want to pray together between caucus and the official start of the meeting, the gavel hitting, then I'm ve- you know, that is always welcome, but that personally isn't how I pray. And so if it is silent, I will pray silently myself, but it, I'm just saying from personal experience, like, that, that is not, I am not sending that to the higher power in the same way that I pray.
For, uh, for part D, um, I'm talking here. I, I do think that we should not allow the, the, the community to address individual council members. I think that's a bad idea. But, I mean, that was...
That was a suggestion.
I think that's a...
That was a suggestion that they gave us.
I mean, that could turn, yeah, that could turn, I mean, people do it anyways, but I mean, um, to allow it officially, like, I think that's, that's a no-no. Just in my opinion, but...
I agree with you, uh, through experience here. I don't know who's gonna sit up here and let somebody attack him, not me.
And so why, the snipping of the bub, I don't even allow, you know, that's just, I mean, people, people come down and do it anyways. I've been, you know, so I mean...
It's not clear enough that the council is a body. No person other than you for counseling, a person who has control should...
President, does that mean when people are called out and addressed, you will be shutting it down more frequently?
It's my responsibility to do that.
Yeah.
I've had to pick up the gavel a few times, yeah, so, we have, so...
Yeah, I know I've missed it a couple times. I usually try to, try to keep it pretty, you know? And some of the times, some of the times they're directly addressing, it's, it's like fifty-fifty whether it's, uh, nice or mean. So I've tried to keep some discretion to it as to if it's, uh, you know? Tried to keep some discretion on that. I think he's picked up the gavel at least two or three times this year, because I missed it. Even, even when he's not, he's, he's just the guy that's closest to it.
Literally, he's the guy closest.
I just see him reaching for it, and I grab it myself. All right, um, anything else on the order of business? Committee reports from council, we had some public comments about that. Each person not exceeding five minutes should be giving a committee report and then adjournment.
Can we put in here the meeting last passed eleven PM, uh, we waived committee?
No, we just have to make the meeting time earlier, come on. Um, instead of shall be permitted, could we make it a little more, have a little more, like, be required? To give a report?
Shall be expected.
Shall be expected. Because it's really our job.
Does anyone have any, uh, you know, we can't take votes, but does anyone have any reasons that they, uh, do not think that wording should be changed? So, on the topic of committee reports, there, uh, it says each member shall be permitted to give a report on matters pertaining to the council person's committee assignments. She's suggesting that each member shall be expected to give a report instead of permitted to.
Sometimes you don't have a report.
That could be the report, though. There is nothing to report. And then, but then it's on record that way.
Yeah, with, with liaisons, I mean, like, you have your water to- today?
Yeah.
You had sewer on Tuesday, I guess?
Yeah, no, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so this upcoming council meeting, you've got both of those.
Yeah.
And then on the next council meeting, you're not gonna have sewer or water.
Right.
So there would be a reason that you wouldn't have a report, because you would have, you would be reporting on all your liaison responsibilities.
Right, but within, like, our ones that we are chair of, those to me are more ongoing.
Yeah.
Because they're not necessarily, I'm attending board meetings, I'm just, I'm meeting with the chief of police regularly, I'm meeting with fire, like, all of that. Um, so it totally makes sense when it doesn't align with the actual authority or board meetings, um, but there's other work that we all are doing as of our chair positions.
I think, I, I think if you have one, you give one, if you don't, you don't have one. I don't think it's, I should be expected to come up with five minutes worth of nothing if I don't have anything.
Not to exceed five minutes.
Right, right, so I'm saying, two minutes, one minute.
I gotta start timing a couple of them.
You know what I mean?
Yes, you do.
I think if you have it, you should give it. If you don't have it, you don't have...
I'm surprised, that's the part you s- uh, object to, Suzanne, you sure you don't wanna object to that time limit?
I'm fine with five minutes, I just want it to be expected that we give a report every single meeting. Even if it is, I have no, I had no meetings the last two weeks.
I might delegate that timer to Lori, she's got more experience with it.
It's fine.
I always appreciate your reports. Oh.
And she's...
Oh, that's on her?
Yeah, we've, we've talked a few times.
Oh, she's talked. I'm not surprised.
Wow.
Lori's great like that.
What's that?
Keeping it to five minutes of the committee report.
All of my face be the whole reaction to that one. Is there anything else on the, uh, on that? Tw- one twelve eleven, president.
Uh, just same pronoun updates.
Want the president to let me know when I'm supposed to be in charge.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, like more notice or...
Just let me know.
Okay.
I could have sworn I brought it up during the solicitor's meeting.
But it's okay, I'm quick on my feet.
Heard. Okay, any other, uh, issues with presidency? Not the president, but the presidency.
The roles.
Man, people out there laughed a lot at that one. I think they got some input on that. Snap.
Well, lucky for you, we've already decided they can't be addressed individually, so you're, you're good.
All right. One twelve twelve, permanent standing committees and liaison chairperson. Committee on whole shall have permit standing committee of council, president should be presiding officer, uh, written reports. And then it goes on to say the liaison between council and various departments, bureaus, authorities, and then, um... And then, yeah, yeah, authorities and, and departments.
It just, this entire, like, section A, just, I don't know, it, it doesn't seem to be necessarily how things are happening in real time, is my concern. I don't necessarily have an alternative to offer, but it doesn't seem to reflect current actions.
That we don't write reports?
Right.
Yeah, it's weird in the electronic age, 'cause, uh...
Yeah.
'Cause we, like, shoot an email if there's an issue at one of our authorities, or if there's some dialogue around that, but we don't, we're not exactly submitting reports for the record.
Right.
All right, I'm just gonna make a note to mess around with it and think about it more. Does anyone have any particular suggestions with it?
I think something more in, like, inclusive around, like, general communication. Because we are communicating, we're making calls, we're asking questions, maybe we're shooting an email or a text, but we're most certainly not making reports in writing.
Question, for tonight's, like, a meeting like tonight, everybody's taking their own notes. Is it possible that, how will we make it a, a, a practice that, at the end of a meeting like tonight, we are all emailed, like, uh, here's what we talked about today? You know what I mean? That way, somebody has a note, that person has a note, they, but here's, here's a rundown of what we spoke about in that meeting, that way everybody has...
So you mean, like, how Chris Merlett would do the report, where he would type everything about what council was saying, or what everybody was...
Like, tonight after, like, when we have a meeting at, at school, for example, like, our principal at the end, and, like, he'd be like, hey, here's, here's what we talked about today. Does anybody get...
Just like a meeting summary.
Yeah, a meeting summary, right.
That would be so nice.
Yeah, it does, it doesn't have a note taker, and then, like, somebody would, you know, that way we can have a record of what we talked about, and go back and look at it, and, you know? I don't know if that's, that's just a thought.
We gotta be our clerk?
Right.
Uh, we have to.
And they're all recorded now.
Huh?
They're recorded on video now as well.
So is this being recorded?
Yes.
Sure you can utilize, uh, AI, that would surprise.
AI could scrub it for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if we can wait to put anything in writing until AI can do the work for us, I'd be more comfortable with that.
Yeah, it absolutely can do it now.
What is AI?
What isn't AI?
Come on, check it out.
Better question.
Just kidding. Who is that? We're getting, we're getting some nice crowd reaction. We're gonna make sure we invite crowds to all these ones for...
All of our meetings are public, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I mean, they just come to the ones that they, that they care about.
Hey, so I do wanna talk about one twelve twelve B with some, um, with, with some frankness. Um, when Liz became president, this is one of the things that she and I discussed before I took office, and, um, like, we were discussing what her agenda would be if she was to become president. And this is something where I think she did a heck of a job really cleaning it up for us. And, uh, with the committees with downtown and Erie Core, and communications and information, I think those were, like, the more creative ones. But public safety is a department, public works is a department, uh, economic development is a department. We have five departments in our city already. It may be nice, because some of these get divided up into peculiar ways, that the housing committee, for example, is in charge of streets, but not the public works committee, and there's some idea behind that, but the, and I think this is why we get so convoluted in caucus and why it's not so clear who it is that's responsible for what. We've got five departments, and I'd like to see five council members chair and be liaison to those five departments, which then leaves us one more department. We've got five departments, and I'd like to see five council members chair and be liaison to those five departments, which then leaves us one more department. And we have had requests to make a communications department or a human resources department. I also think, A, um, one of the areas that's been the toughest for me to keep up with is the authorities, and knowing when the different authority positions expire. And board positions expire, liaisons, uh, that's a bit much to even ask liaisons to keep up with it in the way that we need it. Uh, we had a particular board that needed the entire board reappointed this year, because they just, they just missed it. So, so I, I lo- I am asking for the consideration, and I'd love to have criticisms and tell me why I'm wrong, please. Uh, if we could have liaisons to each of our five departments, where somebody is talking to Lisa, somebody is talking to Chris Groner, somebody is talking to Jackie, you know, like, that we go and that we have those five departments covered by one person each. And then a sixth wild card spot, kind of? Um, 'cause some of this has been, some of this has been a bit much to keep up with as to where everything is, and I think it fits our other code, one fourteen and one seventeen. Um, a little more clean, if the council would be more organized on this as well.
Well, we might not even need that wild card, because if the president and vice president are splitting a whole bunch of things, then that leaves five department heads, and that's a pretty clean division.
That's a thought. Mel, I would love some of your input on that, you're the most experienced on this.
Authorities in the past used to tell the clerk, and I think they still do. And the, um, clerk has a record of who's expired and who's coming up, and then she relays that to the council. Is how it was done in the past.
Yeah, we just missed one whole one, and then that, and I, part of this came up when we were trying to figure out some stuff with the CRIS, because I looked at Lancaster, and they have a personnel committee that does all the appointments. Not all, they do all the appointments, they, they make, they make sure that they're on top of it. So that was one of the things I was looking at there.
I mean, I support the idea of cleaning it up, so it's easier to follow, and so that these department heads know that council wants updates before things are put on the agenda for us to approve. We would expect some type of report on what's going on, that way we know, so we can let our other council members know. But then it does get more so of the whole exclusion of, you gotta go through one specific councilwoman, a wall person to know what's going on per department. So that's just something to consider. But, I mean, I like cleaning things up, making it neat, easy to follow, so that the departments all make sense on who's technically.
It doesn't address the authorities and the boards, those could still be divided to interests of particular council members. When we addressed it two years ago, you know, we, there was some thought, like, public safety had the, um, the convention center and port authority, because they often work with police, like, they have their own police stuff. And then public works had sewer and water, and we switched, I know it makes, but there's some reasons why we don't do that now, or why it doesn't matter. I was trying to do some particular things with those. So that was, so, but when we switched and you came on, uh, Brzezinski had a personal, he had some concern, you know, and there was some major things happening at port and convention center. So I made the judgment call to break it up in what made a lot of sense. So I, you know, I'm, I'm admitting that the way this looks so scattered, I contributed to, first thing I did. But I think the departments can just straight up be clean.
So essentially, you are going to rewrite B because of?
Not me, but I would like council to rewrite B.
Okay.
I'll probably be the one that actually is doing it, but yes.
Okay.
Um, so that, 'cause right now, it's all at the discretion of the president. And, uh, and I think that's, uh, somewhat foolish.
Could it be at the discretion of the president and vice president, if they're both not given department heads, could that be collaborative?
Yeah.
So I think that would, um, would depend on who the president is, technically, the vice president would have whatever the president assigns him, or to, uh, be in charge when the president is not there. So, if we can't make a standing appointment for the vice president, it, it would be out of, out of, out of the order.
So, I like the idea, I hadn't even thought of it, but president and vice president not having department assignments, and then, especially with an at-large governance, I think it makes a lot of sense. There is some, let me point this out, there is different levels of responsibility, public works will be a more difficult assignment than economic development. Public safety will be a more difficult assignment, probably, than planning. But, I understood that when we were dividing up the first time, and I, and I asked for the one with the biggest budget, second biggest budget. I didn't wanna do public safety.
I think that's inevitable, to some degree. That some would load than others.
Mel, do you have thoughts on this?
Regarding, regarding public works. I've had public works for a while, and then, uh, it was broken up, and... Once it was split up, I lost a lot of contacts and information getting. Uh, when I had public works as a whole, I had an understanding of what was going on within the departments. So I would say whoever picks up public works should have public works, all of it.
Yeah. And thi- this is, now, I, you know, we talked, you'd shared that you wanted it to be a little more everybody being able to do everything, but I, I would love for, like, if a constituent came to me and said, hey, you know, I'm having this problem in my neighborhood, and code enforcement... I don't wanna, I, I don't feel the responsibility to know every single code enforcement person, but if we had a liaison to that particular department, they'd be like, where's the person live? Oh, oh, that's Higgins District, let's, let's make sure, oh, I'll make a connection for you. Like, the, I would feel way more confident in council's ability to do that than, you know, or even when it comes to public safety. You know, knowing that, okay, Suzanne's liaison there, who's the, you know, oh, you need to talk to, that's an inspector issue, she, she'll, she'll point you to Jan, you know, like... I, I trust getting stuff done way more efficiently, with more direct responsibilities, 'cause right now, public works, to take example, Bureau of Engineering is in public works, that's on Mo. Streets, parks, code enforcement, golf, that's on Mo. Public works, radio communications, that's part of public works, because of, it's at the garage, that's on Jasper. Brzezinski has public works with the fleet maintenance, refuse and recycling, sewer management. So we have four different council members doing public works right now, and I really don't trust anyone to do that, you know.
So, why don't we, why don't we do this, since there's five departments, uh, whoever the vice president is, or the six... Throw the vice president in, and make two liaisons to that department, and they can divide the work up between themselves. And they could be a standing committee, um, to make sure everything, you know, gets communicated back to council.
There's still two other people on the committee as well, there's a committee chair, and then there's two other on the committee as well. So it doesn't have to be, you know, like, right now, the public works committee is Brzezinski, but it's also Troop and Witherspoon.
Right, but I'm saying, as far as liaison, make two liaisons to public works, and then they can divide it up between them, and then the committee also would also... They can report to the committee, or report to full council, and so, since they are gonna have the most going on, the most changing, you know, day to day, week to week.
Okay. Do we, um, you know, we can't take votes on things, but I think this will be a pretty notable thing to change in the organization of council next year. So is this the kind of thing that, you know, we can't take votes, but are people comfortable with me looking at this and maybe writing a little something up about it?
I would support it.
Let me ask you a question. When a citizen has a complaint, and they just happen to know me, I'm not the liaison. Should I call the liaison and have the liaison call that citizen? And if so, will the citizen think I'm brushing them or her off?
You know, I get, you know, 'cause we have, we have this little list up online, so sometimes I get a little bit of that, but it's a matter of, can you answer the question yourself? Have you, you know, maybe, like, you've been liaisoned to everything in twenty years, so maybe there's some things that you could just handle, but then other spots where, you know, you, you do brush it off to someone that knows that department better than you. You know, you get, you, whoever's best equipped to handle that. Now, in some cases, you know, like, I got a, I got a constituent that's a neighbor of, uh, of, of Mo's, that she, she's a little bit of a challenge sometimes. And, uh, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't brush that over to, to Mike, 'cause, uh, 'cause I wouldn't want him to have to deal with that one, you know? And, uh, and, and so, you know, maybe it's, it'd be up to your discretion, it wouldn't be, you know, how you do your job as a represent, representative of people.
I think it honestly would just open up opportunity for council members to talk to one another more often than just right before we're in caucus, because if one council member's in direct contact with said department, and you wanna know something 'cause a constituent, you can reach out and find out that information, so that you can deliver the message, or you could actually have the councilperson reach out to the constituent. On top of yourself, calling back, saying, hey, I reached out to my colleague, who actually is the head of that department, this is what I found out, but he's gonna be giving you a phone call too, or she's gonna be giving you a phone call too. So, I mean, I think it's a open avenue to have more communication, so that at least you're being updated too, because you might not even thought that that was something you wanted to know, but now you're curious, depending on what's being called about, so, that's just how my brain works.
And I've already, I mean, without having maybe all of the information, I've already been practicing that, so if a citizen calls me with a public works issue, I give them both the Citizen Response Center number and Brzezinski's city number. Be, like, that's already what I've been doing, I always say, hey, reach out to the Citizen Response Center, like, that's where this should go, but also, like, I'm happy to hear this, I don't, I don't have...
Control.
Any info on this, um, but, and then I usually follow up with them in a month, just to say, hey, have you gotten anywhere on this? And like, one guy got his, you know, got his old fence fixed from, like, that's just been what I've been practicing already.
Yeah. This year's been hectic for me, and for some of you that have asked me about next year's type stuff, and I've been like, I'm writing my dissertation next year and not doing this stuff again. This is a big part, because most of those, I end up just handing it myself, 'cause I don't have a clear enough direction to delegate it. So let me repeat, let me, uh, let me rattle off the five departments, everyone feel confident they know the five departments? So we got five departments, we got public safety, public works, we got finance and administration. We've got planning, and we've got economic development. The department directors, that's for the person that's in charge of those departments, and the finance and administration, administrative department, that's Lisa Gummerstall. Public safety, we changed that ordinance earlier this year, so that the bureau chiefs can act as the director, if there is no director, 'cause the ordinance had previously said the mayor stepped down into the role of director. So public safety, we've got, uh, Walco and Spizarney on there as the chiefs, they would be the directors on that. We've got Jackie Spry now as the planning director. Economic development, we've got Groner, and then public works, we've got Choxes.
So, uh, porno clarification, Mr. Groner is not the head of our e- city economic development, as he is.
Huh? Yes, he is, he's the director.
No, he's not, Deb Smith is, he just, uh, w- we gave the hybrid office that they run out of the county all of the money. So it appears like he's the head of our economic development, but he is fact not.
We have some other ordinances to update then, if that's the case. Now, this is, and I think that's, see this last one, proper liaison chairperson together with council president shall review the official agenda prior to the caucus session meeting, and notify the office of the mayor in writing, or any department directors, or bureau chiefs, or any other employees, whose presence is requested at the caucus meeting. So at this point, I don't feel that we've been streamlined enough to do that effectively for our caucuses to be valuable. I do feel a lot of your concerns about our caucuses not being as effective as they could be, and I think that's the issue that I think is the, the biggest.
If they want it passed, they'll be there.
We're at an hour and a half now, do we have any other things to discuss, 'cause I, we usually try to crap, we usually try to rack these up in an hour. Adjournment, supplementary rules, review of budget, oh, 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 yeah, no, we have some important things on this page. Roberts rules, everyone good with that? Uh, review of budget. Anyone have any questions about that? Our semi-annual, uh, basis got postponed this year from July to, what was it, August?
August.
That was, that was just a request they made of me, and I said, yeah, we can make that work.
And is it, I, I'm just curious, is the water and sewer called out in that way just because of their role as authorities? Should it be other?
Um, no, because of their, um, what's the name of those budgets? Funds.
So because we, we, we assign the prices for the water and sewer.
There should probably be other ones in there, like the golf fund and some of those things.
Like, all those ones that Lisa gives a breakdown for, can we add those in?
Yep. Add golf, stormwater now.
Yes.
Yeah, what are those, what are those bunch of things called? Come on, somebody here's got the experience, better than me, knows. That's gonna drive me crazy. The golf fund, stormwater fund, water fund, sewer fund, what are those, what are those, what are those funds called? Cap? Something, they're called something different, that we have to use them, and it's by state law, that they have to be, like, revolving, and they have to be con- contained.
Does it call them out in Lisa's by- enter place?
Yeah. But I just don't remember work, my brain's not working, I don't like it when that happens. Alright, so adding a couple items to that, any other questions about the review of budget? Seminar and conference reports?
Has that ever happened?
You're supposed to do it, I've done it.
Did you do it at count, at, like, during committee report time or presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
But also, I handed it in to the clerk.
Oh, nice.
She'll file a detailed written report. That's so vague yet so specific. I just think if you wanna keep that, you might wanna get some clarification on what exactly you would like them to write to you. There's great conference, went to Disney, like, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we do at my work, for anyone who does any professional, outside professional development, it's just like a template.
Right, so if we had a form that said, you know, had like specific things, you just fill it out.
That's probably an administrative function more than a legislative function, but we can do that too. Okay. Alright, is there anything else, give your word? Alright. Meeting adjourned.